Madam Clerk, would you please call and roll.
Councilmember Beard.
Here.
Councilmember Broadwater.
Here.
Councilmember Winn. Mayor Protam Jones.
Here.
Mayor Dalton.
Here. Okay, we're going to have a closed session, conference with legal counsel, excuse me, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A, Johnson et al. v. City of Garden Grove. And also, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A, Deng et al. v. City of Garden Grove. I'd like to open all communications. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? I see none. I'll close all communications. And we will also have a study session, which the subject will be the updating of the city's municipal code. I'd like to open all communications for this item. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on that? Seeing none, I'll close that. And we'll go handle the study session first, and then the closed session second.
Let's go ahead and do closed session.
I'm sorry?
We'll do closed session first.
Okay, then we'll just do what I said, only in reverse. Okay, we'll do the study, or the closed session. Okay, now we're going to that other room. Okay, this time it's called again to the Garden Grove Housing Authority. Kathy, would you please call and roll?
Commissioner Beard.
Here.
Commissioner Beckles.
Here.
Commissioner Dalton.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Here.
Vice Chair Broadwater.
Here.
Chair Winn.
Okay, at this time we'll have oral communications. Does anybody like to speak in front of the Garden Grove Housing Authority? Going once, twice, gone. Okay, we will at this time close the, uh, close the oral communications. Let's go to consent items.
Mr. Chair, you've got two items, two A and two B, and it's recommended that these items be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion is requested.
Any discussion? Entertainer motion?
Move it. Second.
Call for the vote. There are no public hearings.
Commissioner Beckles, your vote didn't register.
Say it again. No, no. You're kind of voting.
Well, she sees six yes votes.
Okay. Okay, very good. No public hearings, there's no items for consideration, any matters from Commissioners and Director. Hearing now, and we will adjourn to September the 27th at 6:30 PM. You know, I sort of...
I'm leaving this weekend. I'm a little late, though. Whole family.
Oh, that's good. Just want to be there.
No, we'll be there about four, five days.
Okay, see you next time.
You know, I sort of... Are you gonna do some flips for us? Okay, I'd like to call a Garden Grove City Council meeting in order. Madam Clerk, would you please call and roll?
Councilmember Beard.
Here.
Councilmember Broadwater.
Here.
Councilmember Winn. Mayor Protam Jones.
Here.
Mayor Dalton.
Here. We'll have invocation by Kingsley Okorike, the Finance Director, and a pledge of allegiance by Mayor Protam Jones.
Okay, please stand, let's wait. Dear Lord, we ask for your blessing over this meeting tonight. Please give us wisdom to not just to know what is right, but also the courage to do that which is right. Let your will be clear, and let your will be done. Amen.
Please face the flag and say the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, so we have a business spotlight.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like Susan Emery to make the business spotlight this evening.
Good evening. Tonight, the Garden Grove City Council presents the Business Spotlight, highlighting the accomplishments of a local business. This evening's recognition goes to one of our leading businesses, which is celebrating a milestone 50th year in Garden Grove. Would John Carmy and Charles J. Coe of J. Coe Plumbing please come forward? J. Coe Plumbing has been a fixture in Garden Grove community for almost 50 years. The company is family-owned and operated. Their belief in providing honest and reliable service has made them a trusted business leader throughout the years. In 1962, J. Coe Plumbing first moved to the city of Garden Grove on Brookhurst Way. In 1994, the company moved to their current address at 10372 Stanford Avenue. The company's official 50-year anniversary will be on March 6, 2012. When it comes to strong, reliable, and longstanding businesses, J. Coe Plumbing is one of the leaders in the community. They are a proud company which values Garden Grove as its home and believes there are no negatives when doing business in this community. Serving most of the Orange and Los Angeles Counties, J. Coe Plumbing has successfully created longstanding customer relationships. They believe in treating customers as if they were their own family. Not only is the company committed to providing the highest quality service and fair pricing, they strongly believe in doing the job right the first time. The staff at J. Coe Plumbing also enjoy the opportunity to meet new people from different walks of life. In addition to generously giving to the local Boys and Girls Club, J. Coe Plumbing is also a part of the Better Business Bureau. In honoring J. Coe Plumbing for their achievements and economic contributions, the mayor and city council would like to present John Carmy and Charles J. Coe with a gift for being the August Business Spotlight. Garden Grove salutes J. Coe Plumbing as an industry leader and business success.
I'd like to put this to you, and then you can shake hands. We'll have a picture taken, and if you'd like to say a few words, please feel free.
Approach now, or what?
Yeah, come on up. Come on up, come on down, whatever.
Good job. Good job. You're still in business. Do this together. Congratulations.
Thanks, your man. You know, who's gonna carry this? Okay, we'll get your pictures with this, and then, as I say, you can say a few words.
If you could look at the camera right here?
Come on in there, yeah. Oh, no, you're part of it. Can't have one without you.
Good-looking one out.
One, two, three. Take one more. One, two, three.
Please, come on, come on back down to the microphone, and then if you'd say a few words.
We're going to Disneyland.
Nothing but strawberry fields.
You want to sit down?
I'll wait over there.
Okay. Tonight, I was going to actually talk about history of Garden Grove, farm fields, avocado fields, citrus groves, Grange Hall, all the things. I remember the railroad going through here. So, you know, this is like old hat, but I want the focus to go on my father and my mother, which without their dream, my brothers, Tom, Bob, and myself, would not have had a future. His legacy, her legacy, is brought into the third generations of plumbers, and we have made Garden Grove our home. And it's just been a great city. And I just want to let you know that we supported this thing from the '58 to now. Yep. And it's just been a good place to work. We've, I have my wife working for the city, my sister-in-law, I used to work for the city, but went on to a better way of life. No. It's been, mm, working for the city. But it's been great, and I just want to say thank you very much. And the award should go to Charles and Carmy. They have the fortitude and the foresight to see us into the future.
How many vans do you guys have?
Pardon?
How many vans do you guys have?
What was the last count, 11?
Yeah, sure.
I think it's 11.
See those things all the time, all over town.
Yeah, we have, we...
You guys are busy.
We have 15 people that work for us, and we're a well-based community service to the company. It's been great.
Most of us family.
Most of us family. Well, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Okay, we have a community spotlight. Oh, wait a minute, you gonna say a few words? No, go ahead.
I was gonna say something. John pretty much stole my script, and this is, this is really to honor my father and mother. And we moved here in '58, nothing but orange groves and strawberry fields. But they picked this place, and through all sorts of struggles, economic and health, and their, their determination, they kept it going and gave us a life. And it's been pretty darn good in Garden Grove, actually. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, now you have the community spotlight.
Yes, and Susan Emery will recognize our Miss Garden Grove and her court.
This evening, the Garden Grove City Council is pleased to shine the community spotlight on last year's Miss Garden Grove and Miss Garden Grove's Outstanding Teen and Courts of Honor. They proudly served and represented the community during their reign in the past year. Will Miss Garden Grove 2011, Leah Cecil, Garden Grove's Outstanding Teen, Jessica Tonti, along with their courts, Bree Morse, Amy Lee, Missy Mendoza, and Valerie Alcaraz please come forward? As a preliminary to the Miss America Pageant, the Miss Garden Grove Scholarship Pageant distributes over $5,000 each year in scholarships to local young ladies. In addition to performing in a talent competition, each contestant delivers a platform based on a current issue she feels is important. Miss Garden Grove 2011, Leah Cecil, a native of Garden Grove, is a music major at Cal State Fullerton. Leah is a talented harpist and a member of the Orange County Symphony, Fullerton University Symphony, and the Orange County Mormon Corral and Orchestra. Leah's personality, drive, and talent were instrumental in her previous service on the Garden Grove's Outstanding Teen Court from 2004 to 2006 as Miss Garden Grove 2011, and most recently as first runner-up at the Miss California Pageant, including honors for Most Outstanding Musician. Leah was sponsored by the Garden Grove Rotary Club. The city extends a special thank you to Leah for her leadership as Miss Garden Grove 2011. Representing the community with Miss Garden Grove were her court members, Bree Morse, Amy Lee, and Missy Mendoza. Bree Morse is a Pacifica High School graduate, now attending Cal State Long Beach as a business major, with her eye on an MBA and marketing career. A competitive cheerleader and gymnast for over a decade, Bree coaches, patiently sharing her expertise and passion. Bree previously served as Miss Garden Grove's Outstanding Teen in 2009. Bree's sponsor was the Kiwanis Club of Garden Grove. Our congratulations go out to Bree, who was crowned Miss Garden Grove 2012, last Saturday night. Congratulations, Bree. Amy Lee, a graduate of La Quinta High School, is a 20-year-old junior at UCI, majoring in neurobiology and behavior. Her goal is to obtain a medical degree and become a pediatric neurosurgeon. She's currently conducting undergraduate research at UCI Medical Center. Amy, a classical pianist, has been on the Miss Garden Grove Court twice. Her sponsor was Farmers and Merchant Bank. Missy Mendoza, a graduate of Garden Grove High School, is an 18-year-old freshman at Cal State Fullerton, majoring in nursing. Missy's calm demeanor and caring personality are well-suited for her desired nursing career. Missy is a vocalist and has been singing for nine years. Widdicombe Enterprises sponsored Missy. Congratulations also go out to Amy, second runner-up, and Missy, third runner-up, in the 2012 Miss Garden Grove Pageant. In addition to Miss Garden Grove and her court, the city council would like to recognize Garden Grove's Outstanding Teen, 2011, Jessica Tonti, and Princesses Valerie Alcaraz and Alyssa Alex. Jessica Tonti, a 17-year-old incoming senior at Crystal Cathedral High School, has excelled academically and artistically, winning multiple merit scholarships in arts and academics, as well as membership in the National Honor Society of High School Seniors, and the National Honor Society. After graduation, Jessica plans to obtain a business degree with a minor in dance. Jessica makes time to volunteer with the Men and Women of Action Organization, the Confidence Coalition, and the Special Olympics. Jessica's sponsor was Pacific Paradise Pools. Valerie Alcaraz, a 17-year-old incoming senior at Cornelia Connolly High School, is a gifted writer who has been offered a scholarship to Harvard University. Growing up in Girl Scouts, Valerie is currently a junior leader and has built a strong foundation for leadership and volunteerism. Valerie has served on the teen court twice, and last year, her sponsor was Joe Hugh of the Garden Grove Shell Station. Over the past year, Miss Garden Grove and Garden Grove's Outstanding Teen, along with the courts, have participated in a variety of community events and service projects. They include the tree lighting celebration, Public Works Open House, Strawberry Festival, and the Garden Grove Community Foundation's Free Summer Concert Series. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present the Garden Grove, Miss Garden Grove Scholarship Pageant, outgoing courts with certificates and mementos in recognition of their volunteerism in the community. The city council wishes you the best and hopes that your aspirations continue leading you to great success.
Another photo?
And we had our two teens compete.
Go on, one, two, three. Take one more. One, two, three.
Take as many as you want. You got enough? No, I'm serious. Okay, you're good. Okay, each of you have the opportunity to say a few words up here, and certainly all the time that you've given to the city and us, we can afford you whatever time you need.
All right, I guess I'll go first. Excuse my voice today. I had horrible allergies yesterday, so I'm a little congested. I don't normally sound like this. But wow, did I have an amazing year as Miss Garden Grove, and I don't know if whoever, I know you were at the pageant on Saturday.
We were all, we were all there.
You were all there? Oh, that's amazing. See, Garden Grove has, it's just a great city. But I had just an amazing year, and like my biography said, I've been competing in this program since I was 14, and it was probably one of the best decisions I ever made because it made all of that stage fright go away. I'm able to speak in front of people that I've never met before comfortably, and I'm able to just, I've been able to find out what I'm capable of doing as a young woman. And I hope we can all get every single young woman in this city to at least try for this, for these titles, because it's just, it's such a great thrill to see all these young women growing. And we just had the pageant, and throughout the past three, three months, we had about 15 girls competing, and a lot of them were very new to this program. And the, the growth that I was able to witness just in two months was just exponential, and they just, and I know they're gonna keep growing. So, I thank you for all of your support in this program, and you are what keeps this program really going, because without the city behind us, there, there wouldn't really be any, any reason to continue. So, to know that you guys support this program and support the Miss America program is, is such a blessing, and I, it's really sad to look back on that year and think that it's all over, but I, I know I can look back and say that it was, it was a fantastic year, and you guys treated me like a queen. So, thank you so much.
I just want to reiterate what Leah was saying about the young women who are coming in, and they just grow so much in their time, and I was that girl, and I just, I have seen myself grow so much, and I just want to thank you all for your support and your encouragement for these young girls. Garden Grove is one of the most supporting cities I've seen in the Miss America Pageant, and I just love you guys, and I just want to thank you so much.
Thank you.
I know, more of us talking. I'm just so blessed to have had the opportunity to serve this city as a member of Leah's court. I think that we're all so lucky to have worked with her. She's one of the most amazing young women I know, and just knowing that Garden Grove has given us both the backing for all that we've grown up to learn and everything, we both are born and raised in Garden Grove, most of us are for the most part, and knowing that there are such wonderful women here in this city, and as I said, we do have one of the greatest backings from our community in this organization, and that's just such a blessing to know that we always have the support of our city government to help us out. And I also want to thank Stacy, because without her, none of this would really be possible. Stacy does so much for this program, and I think that it really is all her planning and organizing, her emails and everything, so I just thank her part of the city as well, and you guys as also. So, thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Thank you again for everything. We appreciate it, and it's great for the city, and you've done a lot. Thank you. Okay, prior to the council meeting, we had closed session items, and there's no reportable action taken, so now we'll go to oral communications for the agency, the sand district, and the council. Steve, I'm not sure if I, from Huntington Beach, regarding medical marijuana?
Good evening. I'm Steve Welch. I am, have been a resident of Garden Grove in Southern California for, since 1973. I am currently the owner of a medical marijuana dispensary. I'm a disabled Vietnam veteran. I became interested in medical marijuana through my veterans' doctors. They recommended that I take it for years, and, under the table, and I never did this because I work in law enforcement. I train police dogs, I trained 17 dogs over the years for Garden Grove. Without the medical marijuana, and me having tried that as a last resort, I would be dead in front of you today in a casket, weathered up. Medical marijuana kept me from throwing up 300 times a day, able to keep food down from a surgery that I had that medicines cost. The anti-inflammatory medicines I took for my Vietnam War injuries of my knees, my shoulders, my ankles, everything's basically artificial and metal and cadaverous parts. Not everybody in the medical marijuana industry is an evil person. There is a lot of gang activity in this industry, and a lot of people out there to make money. You all have a book that I gave you in front of you? It's the documentation of me and what I've given back to the community in all of Southern California and the entire United States, because I do work for law enforcement for every, every branch. I work for the countries overseas, I train embassy dogs, I train dogs for Iraq and Afghanistan, IUDs. All these dogs that I'm talking about, over the last 58 years I've done this, have been rescued from the city towns and backyards of California. Not only do I provide a service that helps people, we work for organizations such as Maker Wish, the Patton, little children with Patton's disease. We trained a golden retriever to teach her, we taught the golden retriever, so that when the little girl got excited with the Patton's disease, she'd throw herself backwards. This dog was taught to catch her and break her fall so she wouldn't harm herself. This dog assisted her in every medical visit she went to. This dog is currently a Maker Wish mascot. We have these kind of dogs, and I have spoken to governors, congressmen, senators, I still, I'm very, very much in close contact with Washington DC and the fill on the medical marijuana laws. I was able to talk to them, some of the senators there, and the Department of Forestry. We came to an agreement that I would teach them how to use a dog to replace a $40,000 marijuana sniffing machine. I placed a dog on the hood of a forestry truck in the forest of Isabella, right here in Southern California, where the United States government's fighting a war against Al Qaeda growing marijuana in our national forests. They have 17 special officers that have, that are gonna be able to receive these dogs. They're trained in tactics, the dogs are trained to smell the medical marijuana as it grows, track to the medical marijuana, find the booby traps, the ankle busters and chest busters that are there. Then after that is done, the dog is given, put on another piece of equipment, which goes into hot pursuit of the people that were in that grow. As you know, on National Geographics recently, the people I worked with, and all the people in the medical marijuana industry that you see on the shows, I know all those people. And they're not bad people. I work with Oakstra-Dom College, I help teach. Law enforcement across Southern California has asked me to get into this business and to start teaching and doing seminars for these people on the legality of what they can have in their dispensaries and their grows, and what they can't. As far as weapons, even a baseball bat in a dispensary is considered a felony. So, I've taught our Navy SEAL teams, I've taught our special forces and forces around the country how to fight hand-to-hand and to use alternative weapons. This is what I've been doing for the medical marijuana industry since I myself became sick in '02 from the medications. I used to weigh 338 pounds and be in a wheelchair. I am now 125 pounds and have every joint on me either cadaver or artificial in some way, shape, or form. I've recently been diagnosed with cancer. That cancer has been in remission since I've been taking a derivative called tincture of medical marijuana. It does work, not everybody's a criminal in the industry. I do my part in this industry by providing law enforcement, including Garden Grove, with dogs that detect illegal drugs and weapons. We recently did the APC School District, the Hawaiian Gardens School, Artesia. That, that school, in the period of time that we've been working with them, has become from, has come from the very last-rated school in the nation to the number-one school in the nation. I worked with the school district, I worked with a principal named Sergio Garcia, and five other principals at the high schools. All that you, all that I'm saying to you can be verified in that book, you can read the articles about us and how we give to the deaf. I started the Signal Dog Program in the, in the United States for the hearing impaired.
What is your last name, I'm sorry?
Welch, W-E-L-C-H, just like the grape juice.
Do you live in Garden Grove?
I just recently moved to Huntington Beach from Garden Grove.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Peggy Bergen.
Peggy Bergen, 33-year resident of Garden Grove. Well, I'm here for a couple of reasons, none of them are really tragic or really serious, but basically, I would like to... None of them are really tragic or really serious, but basically I would like to say thank you Mayor Dalton and I guess Dina is not here this evening, but I am a parishioner at St. Callistus and Father Twin has been dealing with the city to get an extension on a building, not a building permit for new structure, but just a remodel. And due to the financial climate, that basically it just wasn't ready to happen at this time. So he was very thankful for all the assistance he got from you and from the staff. So thank you very much. You guys do come in handy sometimes. Also, I'd like to say thank you to that nice spotlight on the J.Cott Plumbing. My husband was in plumbing for years, plumbing-related activities. So I do know how, what it involved business that is and how it is such a necessary one no matter what. And I do hope they are being very cautious with, when, when they're working in establishments with pipes, padding and asbestos, which is the main topic I'm coming to talk to on tonight because it is very serious. It's not only serious for the people that are working with it, but it's serious for the release of any that gets into the air. So therefore it is something, and from the looks of the family, they seem to be working in a very cautious manner because they all look very healthy. But also I would like to say, now it seems most of our community spotlights have been for the long-term businesses in Garden Grove, which I think is wonderful. It does show us that some of the people have come here, stayed, prospered and have really made a life for themselves in the city, helping the city as well. But also I think sometimes it would be nice to, on somebody's first or second anniversary, to have a spotlight with them. They've started recently during economic downturns, they have made a job, they have either hired people or they have just hired themselves and are doing something in the community. A spotlight on someone, this would inspire more people to start up businesses, realizing some people are able to accomplish in very difficult times. But I'm here to speak on the item, on the agenda, the agency agenda tonight, 5A. It's awarding a contract to J&amp;G Industries for asbestos abatement and demolition on five, five or six properties having to do with the Wolf Hotel and Water Park that will be starting up, I guess, in about, less than, a little over a year. I was very thankful to see that, I, I did look up the company online and they are a well-established company. Let me see, it says here, I did write down, they've, they've been in business, I think of this, since 1989. And of three or four of the main people that they gave little biographies for in the company, they have all worked and taken classes and led sessions in the proper way to deal with asbestos and asbestos abatement and remediation. So that makes me somewhat confident that when they go in, they're not just going to knock down buildings and throw them into skip loaders and off we go. Because asbestos is a very, very dangerous product. I know that very firsthand. Six years ago, I was just as ignorant as most people about asbestos. They didn't either hear the word, they saw it on ads on TV or on the backs of buses. Asbestos, when it floats in the air, it does stay airborne for roughly eight days. And just to give you an idea of how small asbestos is, most people think, well, I can see it, I will avoid it. No, you can't. This is a picture of a penny, the penny we all carry around in our pockets, fill our ashtrays in the car with and jars at home with just because we don't know what to do with them. On this, it shows you, three grains of rice take up one part of it. Five or six hairs, you barely can see across a penny. On the end of Abraham Lincoln's beard and that little tiny spot, 20,000 asbestos fibers could fit. So there is no way, when you're dealing with that as a product, anybody can see it. Therefore, they need proper equipment. Anytime they're working with anything that turn to dust, it has to be kept wet and it can't be just disposed of, taking it to the dump, it cannot be just disposed of. And that is one of the things I did notice on their agendas, that they do have a proper ways of dealing with this product while they're working with it and that. So that makes me very comfortable because that's going to be a long project and that's going to be a lot of days of them dealing with knocking down buildings, pulling them apart and disposing of them. And I'm glad to see that the company that you chose seems to be somebody that knows exactly what they're doing and how dangerous it is because three of the locations have already been noticed that there is asbestos on them.
Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Peter Katz.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here again as a member of the Vietnam War Museum Board to remind everyone of the traveling wall coming to Garden Grove in October, from October 6th through October 10th. This will be the first of what I hope to be many fundraising events to establish a Vietnam War museum here in Garden Grove. And at this event, we will be honoring Garden Grove's fallen 41 that gave their lives in this conflict as a reminder that war can be hell. And the soldier that was here earlier told you some of his experiences with war. Any members of the community over, out there that have memorabilia and want to display them, they can contact the city at its website for the War Museum. The items will be catalogued and displayed in the education center that we're going to be putting on. And if you wish to contribute those items to the museum, when the museum is established, we welcome anything and all items that people are interested in donating to the museum. This is an exciting event. This is something that this city will be proud of for years to come. And I would just like to say that the only soldier that knows the true heroism of the ribbons on his chest is the soldier that wears it. So we want to tell your stories, so tell us your story so that we can tell others about your story. The video about the wall and the museum is being shown on Channel 3. It is translated in both Vietnamese and Spanish and it has been broadcast over the weekend on Spanish and Vietnamese language TV and radio. So this is a great, exciting event and come join us in October. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll close oral communications at this time. Just a couple of things, Peggy, that you had mentioned. Yeah, I talked to Father Twan about the problem that they had over there and I have to tell you that the first person I called after I was done talking to him was Matt Fratell. So you're right, the kudos go to Matt and his staff and everything. And sometimes we forget, you know, that a lot of these things, no one probably would have known about it. We just took care of it and as, as many things are done on a daily basis, that unless someone brings it up like this, the staff doesn't get credit because people don't know, but they do a lot of really good things for the community. So, and thank you for bringing that up. And I do have two programs, actually. I have the mayor's new business breakfast that once a year I have a breakfast with the new business owners and some of them are, are up to about a year or so, maybe even over a little year if they missed it before. But to see how they're doing, to give them the opportunity to, their 15 minutes of fame, so to speak, because they get to get up each person individually and tell the others there what type of businesses they have. And a lot of times they mesh very well with other businesses. But probably it might be a good idea this year after we do it, maybe to put it on Channel 3 so people see it and they get a little exposure to what new businesses are here and they can frequent their businesses. And that other program too is the mayor's link that I have and I, we talk from time to time on that. About three weeks ago or so, I probably went to 40 or 50 businesses, just, you know, shaking hands with them, introducing myself, seeing how business is going. And so a lot of that stuff, and I guess sometimes maybe we don't talk about it as much as we should and we almost think it's a little bit vain, so we don't. But on the other hand, maybe we're depriving people of not knowing some of the things that are being done and how they are benefiting some of the new businesses in the community. But thank you for bringing that up. Let's see, I guess we'll go to, we'll recess the council and go to the agency.
Okay, at this time, we'll open up the Garden Grove Agency for Community Development. Ms. Baylor, would you please call roll?
Member Beard?
Here.
Member Dalton?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Vice Chair Nguyen?
Here.
Okay, we have no closed session items. We did have no closed session items and oral communications has been taken care of. Let's go to consent items.
Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Chairman, your consent item is a resolution adopting the enforceable obligation payment schedule as required by AB 26 and it's recommended that you adopt that resolution.
So move.
Second.
There are a motion and second call for, I mean, let's call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Okay. We have no public hearings. Items for consideration.
Mr. Chairman, 5A is the award of contract to J&amp;G Industries for the demolition contract involving six structures related to the Water Park Hotel. And Carlos Marquez is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mr. Chairman, members of the agency, it's requested that the Garden Grove Agency for Community Development award a contract for asbestos abatement and demolition of six structures at the Great West site to J&amp;G Industries. On May 12, 2009, the agency and Garden Grove MXD LLC entered into a DDA and an amendment on April 13, 2010 for the sale and development of agency-owned property into 600-room hotel and water park. Pursuant to the DDA, the agency is to abate asbestos-containing material, demolish and clear the site, remove all above-ground structures and all foundations and substructures under the existing buildings. On April 29, 2011, staff solicited bids for demolition of site improvements, traffic control, asbestos abatement of the six structures. Five bids were received and opened by the City Garden Grove's Purchasing Division. The lowest qualified bidder is J&amp;G Industries Incorporated with a total bid of $315,973. Staff has reviewed the licenses and references of the contractor and found that the documentation is in order. As part of the scope of work, the contractor is to implement best management practices to reduce or eliminate air and stormwater pollution. In addition, the contractor is to provide and implement traffic control in accordance with the State of California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. A traffic control plan is to be submitted to the City of Garden Grove Traffic Engineering Division prior to commencing with demolition. The costs for asbestos abatement and site clearance have been budgeted in the Central Hub Package Number 8876 for the current fiscal year. And based on the foregoing, staff recommends that the agency award a contract to J&amp;G Industries Incorporated in the amount of $315,973 for the asbestos abatement and demolition of six structures and authorize the agency director to execute the contract on behalf of the agency. That concludes the staff report.
Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to make a comment. It'd be interesting to know that since they quit using asbestos in construction and of many other things, whether the incidence of asbestos has been reduced. I have no idea. Okay, entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Okay, at this time, we will, we have any matters? Anybody like to bring anything up? Hearing none, at this time, we will adjourn until September the 13th at 5:30 PM.
I was going to do the sanitary district and then before we go back to the council. Okay, I'd like to call the Garden Grove Senatorial District Board of Directors meeting to order Madam Clerk. Would you please call roll?
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Nguyen? Vice President Beard?
Here.
Sorry. President Dalton?
Here. Okay, we'll go to consent items.
Mr. President, it's recommended that Item 2A and 2B be acted on simultaneously unless separate discussion is requested.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion if there's no questions.
Move the consent items.
Second.
Have motion and second call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Items for consideration.
Mr. President, 4A is an award of contract to Nicola Corporation for Sewer Improvements and Bill Murray is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mr. President, members of the board, tonight the district board is being asked to award a construction contract for sewer capacity improvements. Those improvements are located on Twin Tree from Volkwood to Hester and proceed north on Hester to Allard Avenue. There's an additional line on Hester as well that starts at Garden Grove Boulevard and proceeds north to Bruce Spuce, or Blue Spruce. Sorry. These improvements are identified per the district's system evaluation and capacity assurance plan update of 2009. The projects will basically consist of constructing almost 4,000 feet of new sewer main and they range from eight inches to 15 inches in diameter. This new sewer line will relieve the capacity deficiencies, thus assuring compliance with our mandated water quality requirements. On July 6, 2011, 14 bids were received and opened. The lowest qualified bidder was Nicola Corporation with a total bid amount of just over $960,000. The bid is within the capital improvement budget for the district and should the board decide to award the contract this evening, the construction could begin before the end of October and be completed in March of 2012. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. So move.
Second.
A motion and second call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Okay, any member, matters from board members? Okay, hearing none, we'll adjourn this meeting to the next regular scheduled sand district on Tuesday, September 27, 2011 at 6:30 PM in the council chambers. And we still have the recess, right now the council is in recess, so we're going to go and have a piece of cake for celebrating Mr. Broadwater's birthday. Okay, will we convene the city council meeting and go to consent items?
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended that Items 6A through 6H be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion or action is requested by a member.
Okay, I'll either, you have any questions or I'll entertain a motion?
Move the balance.
Second.
A motion and second call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Okay, public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, public hearing 7A is allocation of 2011-12 state supplemental law enforcement services funds and Travis Whitman is here to give a staff report on this item.
Mayor Dalton, members of the city council, tonight the police department is here to request that city council approve its proposed supplemental law enforcement services fund budget for fiscal year 2011 to 2012. SLEF, as it's known as, funding is intended to assist local agencies by providing additional resources for frontline law enforcement programs and is not intended to supplant current funding. In August of 2010, council approved SLEF expenditures for the purchase of equipment to enhance the capabilities of the investigations unit, improve preparedness and communications in the mobile command center and equip officers with protective gear during real-life training scenarios. This year, the police department plans to use SLEF funding for equipment purchases for the police department. The equipment will be used to upgrade and replace aging technological equipment in the patrol cars, purchase mobile interface devices for officers to connect to the recently implemented automated report writing system and to purchase deployment and protective equipment for the SWAT team. Allocating SLEF funding for the new equipment will create no burden on the city's general fund budget and the department is asking that city council approve the funding for these future purchases. This concludes the department's SLEF funding request and I'll gladly answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll open a public hearing. If anyone here would like to, Charles Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last city council meeting, one of the items on the agenda was the purchase of police vehicles. And Peggy mentioned the fact that unfortunately we're purchasing them from an agency that's not in the city, but at least the money for them apparently is coming from Sacramento in spite of the budget crisis they're having up there. And I'm glad to hear that at least we're getting some money back so that we can take care of our needs for our law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the recommendation.
Second.
Motion and second call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Items for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, 9A is an award of contract to Nobest Inc. for median improvements on Brookhurst and Bill Murray is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, tonight council is being asked to award a construction contract to rehabilitate the Brookhurst medians from Hazard to Trask and from Lamson to Catella. Existing medians consist primarily of turf with a sprinklered irrigation. Turf requires weekly mowings and is a heavy water user. Overspray from the sprinklers also contributes to the early deterioration of the pavement on Brookhurst. The proposed rehabilitation will use drought-tolerant plantings and a drip irrigation system. This will reduce the city's maintenance costs, our water usage and extend the pavement life on Brookhurst. We expect that to add up to a good savings over the next 10 years. We expect that to add up to a good savings over the next 10 years. These improvements will be paid for using Mezzanine Funds and a federal grant the city received earlier this year. On August 10, 2011, four bids were received and opened. The lowest qualified bidder was No Best Incorporated with a total bid amount of almost $660,000. The bid is within the capital improvement budget for this project, and should council decide to award the contract this evening, the construction can begin before the end of September and should be completed by February of 2012. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. So moved.
Issue.
Second.
Have a motion and second, call for the vote.
Mayor Dalton.
I'm sorry, yes.
You haven't voted yet. Motion received for yes votes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, 10A is ordinance for second reading, and that's ordinance number 2798-A, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Garden Grove establishing an eligibility cutoff date and a registration process for potential eligibility of medical marijuana dispensaries for future permits pending adoption by the city of regulations governing the location and operational medical marijuana dispensaries.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Motion to move the item. Second.
Have motion and second, call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Okay, matters. Mr. Broadwater.
Well, first of all, I'd like to ask a question about Garden Grove Boulevard and Gilbert Street. Is it ever going to come back into the normal process? The construction there has been going on and on and on and on. Now, just looking, general rhetorical question.
We'll look into it.
We just wanted to see how fast you get over there and how fast you get back.
How'd I do?
Really good. Gilbert and Garden Grove Boulevard, there's some kind of construction going on there that's been going on for quite some time. Could you look into it, see if we could expedite it a little bit?
Yes, sir.
I'd appreciate it very much. Okay, and the second thing I want to talk about is happy anniversary to Mayor Dalton and his wife Sandy, and certainly congratulations from the Broadwater. And we'd like to know how long you've been married, too.
I'll tell you at the end.
And then the last thing, I'd like to ask you to close the meeting in the name of Lenny Main, who died in the last two weeks, and her and her husband, Robert, were actually very famous people around the City of Garden Grove. Lenny was highly involved, highly involved in the Children's Home Society for a number of years when she was younger, and they both opened up their house to the Boys and Girls Club Wine Testing Event, which about the first 20 years of it had happened at their house. They've been involved in the city just about every facet can be, and we're going to certainly, I'm going to certainly miss talking to her once in a while, so I wish you could close in her name.
Yes, sir. Okay, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, just, all right, happy birthday to Bruce, happy anniversary to Bill and Sandy. Just a quick comment on the, on the Miss Garden Grove, I know all of us up here behind the dais were there on Saturday evening for the pageant, it was a wonderful pageant, so Leah and Jessica, thanks for gracing us over the last year, congratulations on the new gals coming in, Bree, and the other gal was Avalos, but I forget her first name. Anyways, it was a fun show. And then, just one other side thing, you know, being a parent and having young children growing up in the city, it's fun to see all the city programs there are out and about. My oldest son, Jaden, is now starting the Friday Night Lights football, flag football league coming up. He's just started practicing with his new team, the Steelers, and he's super excited about that, and it's fun seeing him getting into sports. He also does little kickers over at the soccer arena over by Bolsa High School, and does swim lessons through the city. Just these wonderful programs, wonderful people that provide these great services to our residents, and it's fun to actually have kids and to see it firsthand, just how well these things are operated, so kudos to the city and on what we do there.
Thank you.
I agree with that. Kudos to the city recreation department, includes concerts in the park. I think it's moving over to the Village Green, so I encourage all the residents to go out and attend those. The ones at Eastgate were tremendous and very enjoyable, and with that, I encourage people to participate in the last two concerts. And I want to wish, also wish council member Broadwater happy birthday, and Mayor Dalton, happy anniversary to you and your wife.
Thank you. You know, you asked me the other day where I was some event last week, I wasn't, I remember now, I was at the basketball trophy turnout. They normally have it in the gymnasium. This year, they had it outside, so the parents could have dinner and bring pizzas, and it was probably bigger and better this year than it's been before. And kudos do go to the staff. I mean, so often, we forget about it, but, you know, I have a couple of grandkids that play in different leagues, in football and basketball, and when you go over there, there's our staff people there, it seems like 24 hours a day. I'm thinking, gosh, I hope they're salaried, because if we're paying them by the hour, it's going to kill us. No, but I mean, they really are dedicated, they're there, they help ref, they do everything. And that's really what makes a city, you know, stand above others. When you have staff, when you have people that provide these programs for its residents, it's really something. I want to say a happy birthday to Bruce, and we had a cake, and it was very good. I don't think you made it, but thank you for sharing it. I will be adjourned in the meeting in Lenny Main's name and Lee Goss, a veteran, longtime resident of Garden Grove who passed away last week. Okay, now, now, the drum roll, please. Okay, September 10th, I'll be married 50 years.
Wow.
So, you don't see too many people, but I really did get married young, honest, but sometimes it seems like it's 75 years, and sometimes it seems like it's only five, but no. I love you, Sandy, and we'll start on the next, after September 10th, we'll start on the next 50 years. So thank you.
Sandy said it was 100.
So I'll adjourn until the next regular meeting on Tuesdays, September 13, 2011, at 5:30 here. Thank you.